...plan review standards, given that they have received the variance for the rear yard setback of fifteen feet. The building needs all other setback height, coverage, and area requirements for the C three district. We note that the lot is legally nonconforming due to its width. Because on Main Street, lots have to have a minimum width of one hundred feet. However, that doesn't affect the site too much because we allow property owners to develop nonconforming lots provided that they need setbacks. In terms of landscaping, the upstate is not proposing any landscaping or fencing on the site. It's kind of an unusual configuration because, I mean, it's pretty much just an open, open area. There's not really any room for frontage landscaping along Main Street like we typically see. There aren't enough parking spaces or logical place frankly to put any type of parking lot or landscaped island. However, we noted here that a wall or wooden privacy fence, at least six feet in height or a firm, is required, you know, between the main construction home park and this property. There is some vegetation along the adjacent boundaries located on the adjacent to main construction housing property. But the planning commission may also request that the applicant install a wall fence on their property to further mitigate noise and visual impacts if determined necessary. So we say that if you, if you're going to recommend or require that they install a fence or a wall, I would suggest a six-foot height. However, the zoning ordinance provides the planning commission with a fair amount of latitude in your landscaping and screening requirements. So if you, after reviewing the site, do not find that that's something that's necessary, then certainly modify or waive that requirement.
If we require trees instead of a, the height of the building is, is my concern. Overlooking the, the six-foot wall doesn't mean anything basically.
Only for, you know, ground level.
But we could, we could ask for trees, right?
Mm-hmm. What was it here? Lightning, so they've proposed five shielded wall packs on the site. Zoning ordinance requires that lightning exceed five foot, or five foot channels, half of the eight foot channels, excuse me. On the adjacent private property, this has exceeded two points along the southern and western property boundaries just by a little bit. So that's something that should be adjusted as a condition of approval. In terms of parking, warehouses and storage buildings require one parking space per two thousand square feet. Okay, seventeen thousand square foot building, that's only nine parking spaces that are required. Seven spaces are proposed on the site and there's a sheet noted on there indicating agreement with an adjacent property to provide shared parking. So, subject to the receipt and approval of that shared parking agreement, you would have sufficient parking there. So one last thing that we'll note here is that on the site it also shows on the eastern, I'm sorry, the western building, elevation that shows two trucks, you know, backed up perpendicular to, to, to the building. They both approach on the neighboring property to the west. So if there's again some kind of a shared use agreement between those two properties, that would be, that would be beneficial and looking, just to make sure again that they have the adequate, you know, rights to use a neighboring property for their own purposes. Signage has not been proposed. Again, if they want to have signage, that's fine. It would just need something that would comply with zoning ordinance. So we typically take a look at that sub point two site plan approval. Questions? And do you want to hear from the public or applicant at this stage?
Let's hear from the applicant at this point. Is there an applicant? Just give us just a brief description of what you want to do.
Yeah, my name is Scott Bell. I'm with Lapham Associates where the engineering firm that has prepared these plans for B and D assets. We are proposing to utilize a, a fairly unusual piece of property that's very oddly shaped, but is currently not being used by the existing commercial uses that are along the road frontage. But what we're proposing is, as, as mentioned, Andrew did bring a job there, set over seventeen thousand square foot building. It's used primarily to house recycled electronic parts from automation, automation type of equipment that's found in, in factories across the state. The, the configuration is, we won't have a whole lot of traffic going in there for the most part. It'll be only a few vehicles a day. An occasional truck will, will pull up. We do have loading docks there, will be unloading and loading trucks, but they won't be left there for long periods of time. We do have a good working relationship with the, the adjacent property and will be, we're in the process of drafting up some legal terms for the, the shared driveway and, and use of the parking lot with them. And, and as noted in here, that's something that you folks will, will want to see. Landscaping, just kind of to summarize on that, yeah, the road frontage is pretty much all driveway. There is a small island out there that we do have access to, but it's, we wouldn't want to interfere. There's a fire hydrant there and the traffic vision, clear vision along that road is something that's probably a priority. So we wouldn't really want to plant any landscaping in there, large trees in there anyhow. The adjacent property to the east, we do have a, a vegetative drain that runs through, adjacent to our property, which provides for a natural buffer there. But there's also a water main easement that runs along the east side of our property line. So it kind of limits what we can do within that area as far as constructing a buffer of some sort. That entire builds, building setback is, is encumbered for the most part by that water main easement, I believe. So, or at least a good portion of it is. We have, we, we are a little short on parking. We're one space short, but again, with the shared agreement with the adjacent parking space, we can put another space. We don't feel we need another space, but if, if you feel we need another space, we can, we can find a spot to probably finagle one in there. With that, I guess I'll, I think that pretty much explains our project and what we're proposing to do. I'll let, let you address the public comments at this time.
Thanks Scott, appreciate it. Is there any other public comment, ones we're open here? Having said that, Andy, you want to continue then?
Yes, so the site plan review standards, what we'll go through next. So we've been through these a couple of times tonight. So, for one last time, the first standard, uses proposed without adversely affecting public health, taking welfare. Uses instructions located on the site shall be planned to take into account the property size of the property, uses according to property and the relationship of size, buildings to the site. And the site shall be developed so as not to impede the orderly development or improvement of the surrounding property from uses permitted in the ordinance. So we mentioned the variance that was received for the reduced rear yard setback. They have slightly expanded the size of the building since that time primarily, not as it relates to that setback, but more kind of internally. The, the part that sticks out to the north, on the east side of the site, they made that portion of the, of the building a little bit wider, which is where the extra square footage comes from. So we note that that is what causes the delivery trucks to stick out like that neighboring property. And if they do have an agreement or will have an agreement in place with the neighboring property, that would be very helpful to rectify that situation. And so the other comment that we note here is that this is a quite a bit larger building, both in terms of its overall area and height than what you typically see in the C three district. Usually they're a bit smaller, more retail slash commercial slash office in nature. This is a little more industrial in its, in its function, I think, than maybe what you're used to. But it's a really odd location in general. It's kind of tucked away from Main Street, setback a bit behind some other buildings. So we wrote here that you may discuss the size of proposed buildings in relation to the strong uses and whether this would impact the normal, normal and orderly development of surrounding properties. Can we do all of these, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Mr. Chairman.
Item B, safe, convenient, uncongestion, all defined vehicle and pedestrian circulation shall be provided. Drive streets and other routes shall be designed to promote safe and efficient transportation within the site. So access to the site through the existing curb path on West Main, which includes a decent parking space and address. Due to the size, there, there might be some interruption in vehicle circulation whenever a truck is present at the loading slash unloading dock. So again, before, so and I guess what I'm saying is that if somebody is, is backed into one of the loading docks to access the parking lot, you'd have to drive again through the neighboring parcel to get down to where the, to the vehicle parking at the site. So that agreement with the, with the neighboring property to the west slash north would be helpful to kind of make sure that they're fully, fully, you know, looked up and seen everything that they would need to have access to on that site and have an appropriate agreement in place. Pedestrian circulation is not really going to be an issue here. This is a pedestrian focused type of operation and nobody has to be any pedestrian traffic. And so again, the only area there would be just from the, the parking spaces into, into the building itself where adequate access looks like is provided there. Item C, the arrangement of public or private vehicular and pedestrian connections to existing or planned streets in the area shall be planned to provide a safe and efficient circulation system for travel within the city. We've talked about this a little bit already. So adjacent uses are, are, are commercial. There's like a T-Mobile or something over there, a cell phone store, oil chain service, and, and some other kind of minor operations. And again, so the only kind of observation here is that in terms of the intensity of the uses, a little bit more than what you typically experience in this district. So a lot of your retail operations don't have semi trucks there, for example. And this is, this is pretty beyond, on the low end of that scale. And it's not like there's going to be twenty trucks a day coming in here. They said, you know, one or fewer per day. So again, that, that's something I think that might be worth discussing is, is the frequency that those, that those deliveries may take place, times, things like that. They also, again, due to the change of use and the additional traffic on this driveway coming up with Main Street, a permit from H and D would likely be necessary as well. D, removal or alteration of significant natural features shall be restricted to those areas which are reasonably, reasonably necessary to develop the site. You require that landscape, landscaping buffers and green belts be continuously maintained to ensure that proposed uses will be adequately buffered from one another. They're not proposing to remove any natural features and there aren't any clearly on the site. It's just that they can parcel at this point. There are some trees along the property boundary, particularly to the east where the, where the main construction home park is. So again, we talked about landscaping already. If you want to require any additional landscaping or screening, you certainly may do so, but you have quite a bit of latitude as a planning commission to require more or less landscaping that is inappropriate. Item E, satisfactory assurance shall be provided. The requirements of other, of all of an applicable ordinances, codes, and requirements shall be met, which would be a condition of approval. And then F, the general purposes and spirit of the ordinance shall be maintained along with the master plan. So this also, we note that the C three district is intended to permit a mixture of residential office and commercial uses that don't necessarily adhere to a downtown style and development pattern. So this is a kind of an auto and truck related use that, you know, it receives and, and delivers commercial products or storage. There is some office space proposed within the building as well. So again, the size of the building is, is a bit bigger than any other in the area. However, all the activities are proposed to take place inside the building so as not to disturb surrounding properties. There may be some more information needed to determine the impacts of, of, of traffic. And this mostly pertains to the truck part, right? So how and when are they going to get, going to get, going to get deliveries? Is there going to be any noise on the site associated with that that might disturb the main construction housing community to the east? That's something that we should be discussing, you know, the backup, you know, beavers and things like that. And just in, in terms of timing. So we're maintaining a somewhat harmonious relationship there with the, the dwellings to the east. In terms of the master plan, this is in the highway business future land use category, intended to accommodate retail office and service uses that are auto oriented. It's intended to correspond to the C three general business district. So assuming that this complies in your view with the C three district, then it would also be compatible with the highway business future land use category as well. So I'll stop there for questions or comments, Mr. Chairman.
If, if we were looking at doing trees along the east side area with the valley, Vista, Vista Valley. Question is whether or not we could do that with the tree, the water main on to there.
Yeah, I mean, if you have, well, it would depend on, on what you do. I mean, typically we would, you know, not recommend putting a tree like right smack on top of where water main is and which are going to get a little bit of the hill. There may be some smaller or different, you know, landscaping proposed there that could, you know, not disturb that as much. You could request that depending on which one to do. So if you wanted to approve this tonight as a condition of approval, you could require that they come up with a, you know, feasible landscaping plan that would provide some screening, but also not adversely, you know.
Affect that?
Yeah, affect that. That's certainly something that you could do alternatively. I suppose you could, you know, postpone a decision and have them, have them address that. It's probably minor enough to me that you could deal with it as a condition if you're inclined to, to approve it otherwise. But if there's a myriad of issues that you could turn about, this might be one that you would also have to address.
Well, I'm just concerned with the height of the building, you know, overlooking, overlooking the stuff. What the trailer is. Well, maybe if you put trees, you're still talking many, many years, but it's tall enough to block the view.
Right.
Is there any trees there?
Right.
I would almost be like to see maybe they come up with a building color that's will fade in more into that area so it's not this harsh building that those people living along that back are going to see. That is, you have the waterway through there, so I'm going to assume it's probably a twenty, twenty-foot easement or whatever that is.
Well, it's got to be at least.
And then you got that water ditch there, so.
Right.
I don't, I, in this case, and trust me, I, I like it when people put fences up because they look nice, but in this case I.
I don't see a fence makes any difference.
And I don't think trees need to be anywhere near or risk eventually getting the.
The water.
And I know the, the community there has some trees there. Certainly can't do anything up front. Doesn't make any sense to do it on the backside, frankly. Not at this point. I, I, I find with doing a conditional type thing of seeing if it is possible to plant trees because I think eventually that would be the answer. But you're right, initially it's not going to make all these difference. But certainly we, we don't want to put the water main up at this. So I don't, I don't know how to do that, but we can do that. So you want to ask her? Or?
You want me to add the?
The condition to find out about the, the possibility of planting trees along the water main, you know, not on the water main, but in, in agreement with the water main, I guess.
Yeah, so we have a water main easement, basically the entire.
It's the entire length.
It's, it's entirely length, so you've got about ten feet between the building and the western edge of the easement. It's not a lot of room. I mean, you might be able to, again, yeah. So we can add the applicant to twelve or something, but absent that, is there something else that you want to add?
I'm finding, there's very few trees that are going to be able to go up in a ten-foot area without doing damage to the building.
Right, yeah, that's, that's my thinking. Yeah, I mean, it's a thirty-seven, almost forty-foot tall building, thirty-seven feet, I think is what it was.
Yeah, it's certainly not worth holding up the application at all.
Yeah, thirty.
There is currently a lot of vegetation on the east side of that property. I don't know if everybody's been out there to see it.
Yeah, I, I was out there a couple of times today, as a matter of fact, and over the weekend, actually. And, you know, it's not, my, my concern is the height of the building and overlooking a trailer park where people live. That's, that's my concern. And if there's a way of getting some trees back there that eventually would hide that, it seems to me to make some sense. But again, I'm not, I'm not proposing that we not, not do this. I think that's.
It'd be to see trees too close to the building in a ten-foot area. Ain't going to be mature. You're going to have trees growing to the side of the building and causing damage, things like that. I guess it's up to you guys how close to the property line and the water main would be a safe compromise with risks and things like that too. And, you know, to clean out your guys' ditchway there. So I work with one of you guys, one, I just, you know, just some concerns I see.
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
We're currently in the old Admiral warehouse. I just sold it this last summer. And prior to that, we had to clear all of the trees that were on the backside of that building because they were too close to the building. And our insurance company was going to drop our policy if we didn't clear the, the trees. I want to say it was fifteen feet away from the building. We had to have completely unobstructed. I don't know, I don't know how that's going to play into this, but at least at that building, we had to be fifteen foot clear of the building to, to be able to insure it. For what it's worth.
No, I, I think we'll just, just, how about we just make it a nice manicured lawn area that has to be maintained and mowed and.
Yep, that's fine.
Sprinkling to it so that when they look across, they see nice, a nice back there. I think that would, that would.
I do have a question about this area. I see the roof sheds its water toward that side. Is the shedding water going to be plumped to go to the reservoir?
Yes, all of the, all of the roofs will drain into downspouts that'll be channeled to our stormwater basin.
There's a big channel that drains to the back and then trying to have room to run a squail or storm, storm sewer system to bring out the, the rainwater all the way around the building to the north to that pond. So this, this saved, you know, in the back there, so.
Yeah, I just, I just caught that, the, the roof shed and I was like, oh, I wonder if they, I didn't see it in the plans. I looked at the elevations and I was like, hmm.
You know, it wasn't the first choice, so.
Thank you for bearing that up.
Any other questions on the site plan review standards? Can I make the motion that we accept the site plan review standards, Agent F? Is there a second?
A second.
And is there discussion? Sue, voice, vote, please.
Councilmember Tingers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
Councilmember Plank?
Yes.
Councilmember Schrader?
Yes.
And Chair Barber?
Yes.
Special land use review standards, Andy?
Item A, the proposed special area shall be designed to shut that operator and maintain so as be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. So we talked about this a bit already, just in terms of the overall size of, of the building and its height. That it's larger than most of what is in the C three district and it's, you know, somewhat more industrial facility compared to a lot of other buildings in the area. So the one other comment that we had here is we said that the question whether the proposed building materials, which is just steel paneling and minimal screening are appropriate as proposed in this location. The planning commission should discuss whether the proposed design would change the intended character of the city in this location. So again, this is more of an aesthetics question. If you're comfortable with the design of the building, it's just a steel structure sometimes. There can be some, like Marty you mentioned, maybe a different color or something to kind of break up the, you know, potentially pronotonous look of these kinds of structures. More discussion by the planning commission?
Yeah, I was just going to say, it seems like, I don't know if it's at this stage, if it's too early or too late for that, but some kind of visualization. If you take a couple of site photos and then work out a visualization of the, you know, height of this building and various colors and whatever, you know, it would look like relative to the height of turkeys and things like that around there. I mean, right now when you look at it, you say it already thirty-eight feet and it's going to be a, a big steel, you know, building. It seems and sounds really ominous, but if you had a means of visualizing it, you know, I mean, I've seen architectural firms do that, or any human firm do that via, you know, just put a, put a quick little image together, it would probably help their cause. And I know, like I said, that's what should have been showing up in here that would make this discussion easier or if that's something you have done to, you know, save.
Yeah, I mean, you could certainly request that they turn one in, but, so I guess I would want to know what you want me to do with it because, you know, unless you tell me, and so you'd be there, you're capable of look at it next month before you make your decision or you can delegate that to staff. But I would need some direction from you as far as what you're looking for as a commission that would be acceptable. I mean, I'm assuming it's not going to be like, you know, hot pink or something that's going to stand out a lot. But, you know, I agree that something might, might help, but again, I don't know what, if there's a particular color palette or something that you're looking for or a color specifically. It's something that blends in more for more of a green or a.
I'd say a neutral, uh, natural color. Like a, a neutral overtone, natural color. Yeah. That's kind of what they.
Just an idea, it seems like maybe it should have shown up already, but.
Colin, that's a good thing, especially for the future when, when, if we do get a request like this again where it's, it's a different sized building in relationship to the size, that, that would be something that would be helpful to have.
Do you know what color it's going to be, Scott?
Um, I don't think we've made a color selection yet. Randy might know more, Damien.
Uh, I know we're contemplating like a tanish color or, I know a lot of, a lot of people are going with that with these metal buildings these days, but then go with a bright blue or, you know, whatever you guys kind of like. I think we're open to suggestions.
Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you know, an earth color is fine by me. If we want to go with something brown, you know, in the brown family or green or some way to, to allow it to blend in a little better, I'm completely fine with that. We don't, we're not dead set on having a bright silver building there that draws everybody's attention or anything. So we're willing to definitely work with the, the city on, on the color scheme there. I don't have an issue with that at all.
I would propose leaving it up to Andy to take a look at it and then, uh, once we get the color scheme from him.
But have some sort of visualization prepared because.
Yeah, yeah.
And Ellie, you just scale it.
Yeah.
If we go out there and do a compass and figure out how tall the trees are and how much taller you can be. Show three foot tall building, I can do a visualization of that.
Right, right now, most of the area there is brown. I'll tell you that, it's just brown, so.
I was going to say, could you just give them a color that's already.
Yeah, I'd say brown.
Right.
Right. To really blend in with the existing that's already there.
Okay. And did we, did you go down the site plan review standards? Yes. Around special. Oh, sorry, around special land use standard B.
Yeah.
Uh, so B, this proposed special land use shall be generally consistent with the city's old master planning, which we have already discussed. C shall be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police, fire, et cetera. They have submitted a utility plan that includes stormwater basin to accommodate stormwater on the site. As far as fire access goes, that's something that the fire department would review. If approved, there's a sort of relationship to go around the fire department would be able to take a look at this. I know they already, you know, already somewhat familiar with, with the site because the board of zoning appeals also saw their input during that process as well. Item D, the proposed special land use should not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. We do not believe that to be the case. Most of the area on the, within the building is dedicated to storage. There will be some delivery office areas as well. Item E, the proposed special land use should not involve usage activities, processes of materials and equipment or conditions that will be detrimental to persons' property, the general welfare, access to production of traffic noise, smoke, et cetera. So the, the, the use itself will involve storing and disassembling equipment for recycling and reuse. Everything is proposed to take place inside the building with most of the space dedicated to storage. Certainly ask what kind of equipment or any machinery would be used to take things apart and better understand if there's any noise that would be coming from within the building. Do anticipate any other adverse impacts such as smoke or fumes or glare or odors. Again, we kind of talked about this a little bit already. We mentioned traffic here as well. Just some general concerns about the timing and frequency of deliveries so that we are minimizing the traffic impact on adjacent sites. Probably most particularly the manufactured housing community to the east. And last standard F, the proposed special land use shall comply with the applicable federal state local requirements and all copies shall be submitted to the city, which would be addressed at the condition of approval. Anyone missed that?
Uh, sure, there are.
Yeah, I've got something I need, um, I'd like it to be in there. Hours that big trucks can't sit in those docks at night. Okay. I don't know what their hours of operation are, but no trucks can.
Jimmy, you can probably turn that on.
Yeah, I can probably answer a lot of those questions very quickly before you guys even have to come across them. Our frequency of deliveries there that we would have, semi tractor-trailer in there would be approximately once a month on average, maybe twice a month. That's how often we'd be taking delivery. We work typically, our posted hours are from eight AM to four PM, but we work with a lot of high school kids with a school and work program there, so we're really working more like eleven to three. So those are our main hours of operation in the building. As far as the type of equipment we would have in there, doing any type of work, it's hand tools, power tools, cordless drills, just stuff like that. That's the heaviest equipment we have. We have a five thousand pound capacity forklift, which is an electric forklift. We use to unload trucks, Alujecs, that's it. We don't have any big equipment. As far as traffic load on Main Street, we're currently in the Old Admiral Warehouse. So there'd be like no more traffic on Main Street. We already have that traffic coming down Main Street. I guess it's just in a well different location. I think that's everything.
Okay, questions? Uh, I don't think so. So Marty, I guess in terms of your concern about trucks, I mean, you want to limit deliveries to within, I mean, presumably the deliveries would occur during the hours of operation, correct?
Yes, uh, sometimes we, you know, just depending on truck schedules, right, they might have to come a little bit later. But typically with over-the-road haulers, it's, you know, five o'clock, they want to be done, you know, with their hours as well, so. Sometimes they can meet a truck there a little bit later, but not very regularly. I'd say five o'clock typically is the latest. And as far as trucks being in the docks, I forgot to answer that. We unload them as quick as possible. If they're in the dock for more than an hour and a half, we get charged for every hour they're in the dock. And it's like five hundred dollars an hour, so we're trying to get them in and out of our dock as quick as possible on the road. So we don't, we won't have trucks parked in there overnight or any of that kind of stuff there, in and out.
Okay, I just, because I go to, I run a big truck, so I go to a lot of communities where situation where your building's going to be and the ordinance is there or it's been part of the zoning. I can't idle my truck when I'm sitting there. I have to shut the dock to get unloaded. It's to keep the neighborhood quiet. A lot of the same issues, big commercial building rate tied up to the residential, so. That's my, you know, I mean, I see it daily, so. We gotta, we just gotta try to keep the noise down. To me, that's one good way of doing it, just.
One, one positive with the, the truck docks, when we were looking at the design, is we're backing right up to the building, so the, the building acts, actually acts as a visual and sound buffer from going to the east residential area a little bit instead of that being wide open and nothing behind those trucks. That's probably the best case scenario for backing trucks up, so.
And we did make the building, specifically, we left all the exits off of that easterly side so that there wasn't a possibility of a door swinging open and there might be some banging inside or something that might, you know, a noise that might come out the backside of the building. So it's a, it's a solid wall on that easterly side of the building and, other than the fire exit that we have on the southeast corner, it's more, more on the southerly side to try and mitigate some of those potential neighborly disturbances.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
Then I would make the motion that we accept a special land use review standards A through F. Uh, is there a second?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
And is there a discussion? Sue, voice vote, please.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
Councilmember Plank?
Yes.
Councilmember Schraven?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes.
Commercial storage warehouse special land use standards?
Yep, so these are the standards in the zoning ordinance that are specific to this, this type of special land use. Uh, so real quickly on these, the first one is it's a minimum of like every be an acre, which they, they meet that standard, although with, just barely. Item B says that residents may be permitted on the premises for security personnel or non-tight operators. So this is thinking along the lines of like a, you know, like a warehouse, like a, like a, you know, mini storage facility where you might have. I, I've never seen one with a residence on it, so that's kind of unusual, but they, they do sometimes have like a twenty-four-hour staff building or something. So that's not proposed here, so standard B is not applicable. C, parking and circulation. They have, again, this is generally talking about storage cubicles, which is not something that's, that's proposed here. Again, this is not a, a, a mini storage type of warehouse. The, the circulation areas and parking areas are otherwise satisfactory. And then D requires a ten-foot wide buffer strip along the side of your lot lines. So there is, the space there is, is provided in terms of having some land there. You know, if you want to talk about landscaping and kind of recognize that that's going to be difficult around the building, again, if you want to require anything, you can. And it's something that you can either address as a condition of approval. This standard doesn't say what that would have to consist of or how much of it there should be, just that there be something there. But again, given the, the surroundings, you could just require that there be, you know, your gated lawn area around the south and east and west where there's not any parking or moving areas.
Any questions, Andy? I'll then make a motion that we accept the commercial storage warehouse special land use standards A through D. Is there a second?
Second.
And is, any discussion?
I saw the manicured lawn area with the trees in the building there. You're, you're talking about a thirty-foot trough that the sun is going to be very limited. So the grass growth is, you know, this manicured lawn may not have.
Well, we're not manicured, we're not getting, yeah, mowed for house.
Just because, you know, you can't do trees because that's going to be an issue and whatever ground covering, I guess, goes back there as long as it's maintained and not fully weeds, maybe I have to have that. Maintenance of the grounds would be, you know, above the glass you could hold for, at night, but.
That's it.
Okay. Uh, Sue, voice vote then?
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Plank?
Yes.
Mr. Schraven?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. I then will make the motion for B and D asset recovery special land use to be accepted. Is there a second?
I will support that.
And is there discussion? And this would go with the, um, twelve conditions.
So, uh, Mr. Chair? Yeah, so there's a couple of things that I want to talk about here with, with, with these conditions. Um, I think we can strike conditions five and six. I think we're good with both of those about the application of cemental and the landscaping on the manufactured home part. What else? So then I had, um, for, for condition twelve, about the ten-foot wide buffer strips, I'm proposing that you add a ten-foot, a ten-foot wide buffer strip consisting of a maintained ground cover shall be provided along the side of your lot lines and the rest ends with.
Okay.
Then a new condition thirteen, I think shall use a neutral color like brown or similar for building signs that recently once it has landscaped and surrounded properties and shall, shall submit a visualization sketch to the zoning enforcement officer for review. If that is acceptable to the commission. Then Marty, did you want to have something on there about idling vehicles or trucks or anything, or did you strike that off?
Just strike it.
Okay. So that would leave us with eleven conditions.
Eleven conditions?
Yes.
Strike these five and six.
Correct.
And I'll go with the same motion with eleven conditions as well on it. Any discussion? Sue, voice vote, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Plank?
Yes.
Mr. Schraven?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. So B and D asset recovery special land use has been approved. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thanks for staying with us. Long day. Uh, staff report, Sue, anything?
No.
Mike, anything? Andy, anything?
This is a record, so I'll say no.
Wishingers, any remarks?
All right, so I'll just beat it dead, because I know we're all like, stay here, Mike. So with the, with that baseball diamond issue and the other, and now that horses are already out of line, but like, once they agree our order by the property, we're going to close the baseball diamond down. You could come back to A and say, well, now you're affecting the welfare of the community, right? And so we didn't, we didn't, we were in the middle of everything there and we're like thinking that through, whatever, but like, you know, hopefully these guys stick to their, like, he was trying to be a good citizen and be a principal and, you know, all right, I want to keep this baseball diamond running, I don't want to give that to them. He kind of got himself into a bind because now we're standing in front in the way of his property for just, for punishing him for being so nice to the community, right, not punishing him, but, you know. So that's a strange one, right, but so now it's like, if they get that property and they close down the baseball diamond, you got a bunch of disappointed families and kids. Now we're impacting the welfare of the community, which is, would have violated part of A, you know, so.
But that's their, that's their decision.
That's their decision.
So that's on them, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's a private, it's a private organization renting, so it's a choice. It's not like a par.
Right, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
I think it's for profit federation league is what I think, what I believe is the playing there.
I hope they, you know.
I think they'll play the role eventually, those sort of.
I think it's separate as properties, yeah.
Anyway, does it, I just think about what we're talking about pretty, a lot of bigger buildings. They don't have the baseball back.
That would be an interesting thing. Do I hear a vote to stop this thing for the night?
Yes. Support.
Yeah. All in favor?
All in favor, say aye. All right, can adjourn.